This conference will now be recorded.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, everyone online. We'd like to call this meeting to order. This is Taos County Board of County Commission meeting, special meeting on January 30th, 2024. This meeting is online. Thank you for your patience. The time is 9:16. So we'll get started with the roll call. Madam Clerk, could you call a roll, please?
Good morning, Commissioner Romero.
Present.
Commissioner Behill. Commissioner Brush.
Present.
Vice Chair Mascherinas.
Present.
Chair Romero.
Present. Thank you. We do have a forum, and I see that our attorney, Mr. Patrick Drouille, was also present.
I'm also present. Chair, I'm also present. I wasn't asked, but I'm present.
Okay, please let the record note that Commissioner Behill is online. And we'll move to the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Vice Chair Mascherinas, could you lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Commissioner Behill, could you lead us in the salute to the flag of New Mexico, please? Go ahead. I salute the flag of state of New Mexico, the zeus symbol of perfect friendship.
Among united cultures.
Thank you. My apologies.
And we'll move then to the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
We had a motion by... Who made the motion to approve?
Commissioner Behill.
Commissioner Behill, we have motion to approve by Commissioner Behill, second by Commissioner Mascherinas. Madam Clerk, could you call a roll, please?
Commissioner Behill.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinas.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. Thank you. We have an agenda. We move to public comments. On this one, of course... Okay, let the record reflect the Commissioner... Romero is not...
Is now present.
Is now present also. So we have a full, 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 full membership presence. We now are at public comments, and the number for this is 575-737-6310. We are accepting comments online. Again, we limit the comments to three minutes. Any topic that is desired for the commission to hear on any topic, we will not take action on any as the topic is usually not on the agenda. So again, the number is 575-737-6310. Again, the number 575-737-6310.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I did receive a message that at least one or two viewers on YouTube cannot hear, so we might want to just double-check that, that folks watching can hear us.
Okay. If we could have someone double-check to see if we have listeners out there that are trying to call in and cannot hear.
And I also, Chair, received a message that folks are trying to jump in. They're trying to figure it out. So it looks like we've got some folks that are having difficulties.
Okay. So maybe we're having some technical difficulties on the other end, and so we'll give it a few minutes. County Manager.
Chair Romero, I have a recommendation, maybe just to table public comments and then go through the rest of the agenda, then come back to public comments. So that's just a recommendation.
Okay. I think that's probably where we need to go because we're given some time, and if we have technical difficulties, we're better off to just move forward. So if that is, is fine with the commission, do I hear a motion to table?
Make a motion to table until later on.
Motion by Commissioner Miguel Romero. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Mascherinas. Madam Clerk, could you call a roll, please?
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Behill. Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinas.
Yes.
Chairman Romero.
Yes. Okay, thank you, and we'll move on to budget matters. And here we have a whole list of mostly budget adjustments to, to be considered and approved. And it is not consent agenda, so we will deal with each, each budget matter from A to K on an individual matter. The first one is A, Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval of a Budget Adjustment for the Senior Senator to Allocate Sufficient Funds for Telephone Expenses. Manager, Henry Ohr, we also have our, our Finance Director, Emily Rosson Elliott. Could you present that, please?
Yes, good morning. Thank you, Chair Romero. Good morning, Commissioners. This is just a simple allocation of funds to cover telephone expenses, usually as we near the end of the fiscal year. From what I, what I have seen and spoke about with, with the department heads is they will fall a little short on their budgets and will need these little adjustments. So this is just transferring funds from one line item to the other to cover telephone costs.
Any questions, Commissioners, on, on that budget matter A? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve. Second by Commissioner Brush. Madam Clerk, could you call a, call a roll, please?
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Behill.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinas.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. Thank you. We'll move to 9B, which is Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval of a Budget Adjustment to the Fire Protection Funds to Allocate Sufficient Funds to the volunteer fire department telephone expenses. Emily.
So this budget adjustment mirrors pretty much the first one that I just presented, just allocating funds from one line item that isn't being used to cover telephone expenses until the end of the fiscal year.
Mr. Chair, I move, I move approval of the budget adjustment to the fire protection funds to allocate sufficient funds to the volunteer fire department telephone expenses.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Brush, second by Commissioner Mascherinas. Madam Chair, could you call a roll, please?
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Behill.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinas.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. Thank you. We move to 9C, Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval of a Budget Adjustment to the General Fund Finance Department to Allocate Sufficient Funds for Professional Services.
So this particular item is to contract assistance for budgeting season, primarily for my benefit, being new to the county. I'm bringing in a professional to, you know, assist with familiarizing myself with the budgeting process.
Move to approve.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion, Commissioner Behill, second by Commissioner Brush, to approve 9D. Madam Clerk, can you call a roll, please?
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Behill.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinas.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. And next, we move to E, Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval of a Budget Adjustment to the Senior Program, Senior Companions to Allocate Sufficient Funds to Volunteer Expense Line Item for remainder of FY '24. Emily.
This is for our Senior Companions program. This is a state grant, so we're just allocating funds in accordance with the grant from one state line item to the other to meet expenses for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mascherinas.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Behill Romero. Madam Clerk, could you call, call a roll, please?
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Behill.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinas.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. Move to 9E, Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval of a Budget Adjustment to Senior Program Foster Grandparents to Allocate Sufficient Funds to Volunteer Expense Line Items for remainder of FY '24. Emily.
Again, this, this mirrors the previous budget adjustment we discussed, except it's for the foster grandparents program, and it's just allocating sufficient funds from one line item to the next to cover expenses for the duration of the fiscal year.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the budget adjustment to the senior program for the foster grandparents to allocate sufficient funds to volunteer expense line items for the remainder of fiscal year '24. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Brush, second by Commissioner Behill. Madam Clerk, could you call a roll, please?
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Behill.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinas.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. Thank you. We move to 9F, Discussion and Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval of Department Expenses for the Remainder of Fiscal Year. Emily.
But this budget adjustment is to cover equipment and parts for many Taos County vehicles, moving funds from one line item that isn't being utilized to another to cover these expenses for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Questions or motion? Commissioners?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mascherinas, second by Commissioner Behill to approve. Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Behill.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinas.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. Thank you. Move to 9G, Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval of DFA Resolution Number 2620232024 FY Final Budget, a Resolution to Create a Fund and Budget for the New Mexico Department, Environment Department Raid Grant, Raid FY '24-NP-02 for the Planning and Construction of Recycling Receptacles Recycling Shed, Purchase of a Bailor and Promotional Material Related to the Project. Emily.
So this is a resolution to establish a fund and budget for a previously approved grant, this is for our solid waste program, to begin planning for the construction of recycling receptacles, the recycling shed, and the purchase of a bailor to bail these, these recyclable materials. So this is just getting the, the funding budget prepared to expend this grant.
Commissioners, questions or is there a motion?
I move to approve this item.
I'll second her.
Motion by Commissioner Behill, second by Commissioner Behill Romero. And I would just say it looks like recycling is moving forward. So with that, Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Behill.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinas.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes, and thank you. Move to H, Discussion and Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval of DFA Resolution Number 27232023-2024 FY Final Budget, a Resolution to Establish a Fund and Budget for the New Mexico Department of Finance, DFA LDG, Grant Number 22-G3042, to Plan and Design an Affordable Housing Project in Taos. Emily.
So this particular resolution will be for professional services to contract help to design the affordable housing complex that's been discussed in previous meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move approval of DFA Resolution Number 2720232024 FY Final Budget, establishing a fund and budget for our affordable housing project.
Motion by Commissioner Brush. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Behill. Madam Clerk, please call a, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Behill.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinas.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. Thank you. We move to 9I, Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval of DFA Resolution Number 2820232024 FY Final Budget, a Resolution to Establish a Fund and Budget for Design, Community Engagement, Public Input and Prototype Installation of the Recreational Walking Jogging Trail. Emily.
So the Resolution Number 28 is to contract professional services for the plan and design of the trail. I believe that will accompany the, the housing project that we discussed in previous agendas, and this is just to establish a fund and budget to contract these professional services.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of DFA Resolution Number 28.
Second that.
Motion by Commissioner Brush, second by Commissioner Mascherinas, and I would just have one question for the manager. This is the, dealing with the appropriation that County received last year?
Yes, this is dealing with the Trails Plus Grant that Jessica Stern put in for. This will cover the design and budget of the trail that will be around the nine acres behind the county complex.
There's no further questions, discussion? Madam Clerk, could you call a roll, please?
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Behill.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinas.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. Thank you. Move to 9J, Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval of DFA Resolution Number 2920232024 FY Final Budget, a Resolution to Establish a Fund and Budget for Grant Management, Grant 23 CH-503-37 for Local Governments and Local Councils of Government. Emily.
This is a grant received to establish a fund and budget in, just to contract help for grant management. So this is to establish a fund and budget for those contract services.
Commissioners, do you have questions or do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Miguel Romero, second by Commissioner Brush. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Behill.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinas.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. Thank you. We move to the last one, which is I, 9K, Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval of DFA Resolution Number 302324 FY, to correct LATCF Final Budget to appropriately account for first distribution of the LATCF grant and increase the budget for the purchase of approximately 2.92 acres of real property located at 2026 Cruz Alta, Taos, New Mexico. Emily.
So Resolution 30 is to correct the LATCF grant budget line item. We identified during a reconciliation it wasn't appropriately budgeted. So once this error was identified, we are working with DFA to establish these funds accordingly that will eventually be expended for the purchase of the property that Chair Romero just described. And this will also lead into a greater discussion concerning this property after, after we approve this particular one. So the resolution is to first and foremost correct the first tranche of the LATCF grant, and then to establish a line item for the, the purchase of this property.
So the... Go ahead. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve Resolution Number 302324.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Mascherinas, second by Commissioner Miguel Romero. Do we have discussion, further discussion at this point, or the next item is more... Commissioner Brush.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Brent and Emily. Just a comment about our LATCF line item. If we could at some point, I mean, I, this is, I know we need to do this this morning. It would be great at some point to get an update on the amount of funds remaining in this bucket. And for folks watching, it is a bucket of federal funds. We received the local assistance and tribal consistency fund. I'm just simply requesting, after we move this, that we get an updated balance on what, what remains with our federal buckets of funding. Thank you.
Okay, so we can get that?
Yes, we can get that. Chair Romero, Commissioner Brush, we can work on that over the next few weeks.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussions on this, this item? If not, Madam Clerk, call for the roll, please.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Behill.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinas.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. And thank you. And that, complete budget matters, and we move to department matters. And on this one, we have A, which is Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Purchase of Approximately 2.92 Acres of Real Property Located at 2026 Cruz Alta, Taos, New Mexico. County Manager, Henry Ohr.
Thank you, Chair Romero. Good morning, Commissioners. Before you, we have an item for to purchase, 2.92 acres located at 226 Cruz Alta here in Taos. This building is commonly known as the old BLM building. This was the building that BLM used to lease. And we've been in discussions with the Realtors for a few months now, and we'd like to purchase this piece of property to be used for the Taos County Sheriff's Office. There will need to be some remodeling to be done before they can move in. But this is a good piece of property. It has the garage base for storage. It has the ability to house seized vehicles. There's plenty of room for that. There's a gated yard for the patrol vehicles, and there's room to grow. There's room for, to do an evidence room and evidence locker to make sure those items are properly secured. And then there's a room that, an interrogation room to do interviews. So there, there's plenty of space. Both the sheriff and undersheriff have also reviewed the, the property. Our staff has been in there multiple times, checking the, the heating in the AC units and making sure everything's in proper working order. The appraisal did come back at 2.5 million under state statutes. We can only pay for the appraised price. So we do have the purchase agreement in place. And another thing to note is that this building is approximately 17,000 square feet. If we were to build the same building, it would probably cost us over 17 million the time we were set and done with it. So 17 million versus 2,545,000 with the closing costs and all that. To me, that's a good use of the LATCF funds because we're not going to have to come up or bond or take out any loans to build the sheriff's office, a $17 million building. So I think this is a good use of those grant funds that we have. And then we would use the grant funds for a remodel. We haven't identified, because this purchase hasn't been complete, so we have not identified the cost of the remodel. Once the purchase is complete, we can look into getting those cost estimates, so that way we could use some of the LATCF funds to do that remodel. And there's also work on parking lot that needs to be done as well. So we wouldn't move the sheriff's office into this building until the remodel is complete. So I don't have a timeline for that. Just want to get it done right. We do need to build out some office space in there and work on the vault and make sure all the cableings in for the camera system and for the data. So there's still work that needs to be done. So I stand for any questions, Chair Romero, members of the commission.
Thank you, Manager Henry Ohr. And yeah, this has, is an issue that's been in discussion for some time, last part of last year. It is an issue regarding real estate, so it has been an executive session. So, so we are talking about it publicly, and so we do want any discussion or any questions that Commissioners might have. This would be the time. Any questions or discussion on this? Okay, we have, go ahead, Manager Henry Ohr.
Is, is one of the Commissioners makes the motion, please include that I'm authorized to sign the final documents or the closing documents, the final closing documents.
I would just add that the sheriff, the sheriff's chef department is in need of, of an adequate facility for their, for their operations. The BLM building became available last year, and it does meet the needs of the sheriff's department. The location on Gustorf and Cruz Alta is, is adequate, and the building can easily be adapted to, to a law enforcement center. And so as County Manager Henry Ohr mentioned, if the county attempted to duplicate this building, it would cost us considerably more, more money. So it's, looks like a good... more money. So, uh, it's, looks like a good, good, uh, move for the, the county.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Brush?
Thank you. And I, I would echo the sentiments that this is, um, that this is a need for Taos County. So, I'd like to move approval of the purchase of approximately two point nine-two acres of real property located at two-twenty-six Cruz Alta in Taos, New Mexico, and granting our County Manager Brent Taramillo authorization to sign the relevant closing documents.
I will second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Brush, and thank you for, thank you, Commissioner Vehil, for the second. Any further discussion or further questions? If not, Madam Clerk, can you call a roll, please?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes, thank you. And that is, uh, the, other than going back to the public comment section that we did table. So, again, we want to give the public an opportunity to comment. Again, the number is five-seven-five-seven-three-seven-six-three-one-zero.
Yeah, you do have one, uh, word.
There's, there's a hand up.
Uh, go ahead, ma'am.
And you're, you're on the line with County Commission meeting.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you fine. Go ahead.
My name's Lori Ballyett, and I'm here to speak at the public comment period as a Taos County citizen and homeowner who opposes the construction of the planned stationary slaughterhouse. This is not an us versus them issue. Nothing is black and white. We are all here in this community together. A petition circulated by the Taos Action Group for the community that now has over seven hundred fifty signatures protesting the construction of the slaughterhouse has succeeded in raising awareness and much-needed dialogue in our community. People who signed the petition, including myself, prefer to have no slaughterhouse. I ask that you just, I ask you to stop the slaughterhouse construction and consider expanding the mobile units instead. If you look at the history of farms and ranching elsewhere, particularly in the Midwest, small family-owned farms and ranches like this started with good intentions. And when they grew and became a profit loss, they were sold to big ag industry giants. In a few years, it can happen here, too. What you think is saving our ranching culture here is very possibly planting the seeds for a large factory company to take root. If that, if, if you don't stop the slaughterhouse, and if you can't start the mobile, um, and grow the mobile Matanza, then it is important to move the slaughterhouse to a less populated area and write in regulations to the lease and in the final permit, limiting the growth of this facility to the current publicized fifty cows processed a week and to be used only by Taos County ranchers. This will stop it from growing and becoming a public nuisance and health hazard in a detriment to the environment, the economy, and to the community. Since the business with a public partnership, since it is a business with a public partnership and a house, and housed on public land, this is a reasonable and appropriate request. The not-in-my-backyard syndrome began with a town of Taos placing this in the county near the airport. Even though it is on commercially-zoned land, there are residential neighborhoods and businesses that can be affected, especially if the facility grows. A democratic process includes discourse. It doesn't cater to only one portion of the population.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. You have exceeded three minutes. Thank you for your comments. And we will move on. Do anyone else online that may want to call in, five-seven-five-seven-three-seven?
Thank you.
Three-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have someone else? Go ahead.
Are you talking to me? This is John Adams.
Yes, go ahead, John. We can hear you.
Morning Commissioners. Won't take up much of your time. And, and I just wanted to, uh, thank you guys for this situation with the mobile Montanza as a producer in the county. This is going to be a great benefit. Um, I've been involved in, in a pretty heated discussion over this thing on Facebook, unfortunately, of all places. But, um, I think education is really important at this point, because what that young lady just said right there, she is totally confused, because there is a difference between a mobile Montanza unit and a slaughter plant. These two are going to work in unison with each other. I'm sure all of you know that, but I'm not sure that the public knows that. So, maybe some public outreach, maybe some more explanation, maybe some education about how great a facility this is. But I just want to leave you guys with a couple of facts. In the nineteen sixties, there was over ten thousand processing plants in the United States. Today, there's less than twenty-seven hundred. The need for this is huge. Our producers in this whole geographic area can depend on this. Um, I think, again, education about how these plants work, the cleanliness, the professionalism, the USDA inspection, all of those things need to be brought out so that people are not so concerned, because they, we don't want to hear terms like stench and guts and blood that I've been hearing for the last few days, because these people simply don't understand how these systems work. So, I appreciate it. If I can help in this situation, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else?
Let's do anybody online first. Is there, uh, Eskimo, there's anyone else on?
Anyone else online? The number again, five-seven-five?
Let's do online first, because I'm getting calls.
Okay.
So, there, so let's do anybody online.
Anyone else online? Go ahead.
The microphone on. Can you hear me? This is Shannon.
We can hear you. Go ahead.
I have, uh, Emilio Martinez in here that would like to say a few words.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, John. First of all, Mr. Chairman Romero and Commissioners, thank you very much for allowing us just a short three minutes. But thank you very, John, uh, very much, John. Uh, there's a lot of, and, uh, this is going to Lori, since I know you very well, and you know the allotment, and you know the quality of the beef that I raise. And there's a lot of misinformation out there. Uh, and, uh, but we're trying to address some of the issues that you and your group are bringing up. Uh, we're trying to provide grass-fed, uh, quality beef for, to, uh, for, for, for the folks here in Taos County. It's not going to be just what, uh, John Adams indicated. It's not going to be a slaughterhouse. It's going to be, uh, a mobile unit. And we've been, uh, working with that unit since two thousand and seven. I was part of that, uh, committee. And, uh, and it's, if we can process, uh, the, the, the animals, we're going to be able to generate some, uh, quite a bit of, of, uh, dollars for, for the farming community, for the ranchers, for the farmers. And, uh, if we can process, uh, thirty-five hundred pounds of beef and retail or wholesale at ten dollars a pound, that means that we'll generate, uh, probably around thirty-five thousand dollars a week. Uh, and that's going to increase, uh, the profit margin to all the farmers here and, and, uh, small farmers here in Taos. So, a, a lot of misinformation, Lori, is, is not accurate. And I know you, since you were a former, uh, professor, you're a former, uh, news reporter, uh, you understand, uh, and you know my, the quality of beef that I raise, because you've been in those allotments. So, uh, you know that, uh, you know, it's, 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 uh, people are fabricating not the truth. And, uh, we'll, we have a round, uh, we have another meeting at the round table on the seventh, and you're pretty much aware of that. And I've become the victim of this whole process, but we'll see you there on the seventh. And we'll try to address all those issues that you, uh, you and your group are concerned with, okay?
Thank you, Emilio, for your comments. Anyone else online?
Yeah, hi, this is Kevin Pollak. I'd like to take a couple of minutes.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you for the time. Uh, my wife and I, Ivan Romero, have a house on Tune Drive, uh, very close to the proposed slaughterhouse. And we're here to voice our opposition to this plan. I, I, I thought it was interesting, um, the previous speaker m- mentioned something about being a victim, which is, uh, interesting in this case. But anyway, in Article twenty, Section twenty-one of the New Mexico Constitution, it states that "The protection of the state's beautiful and healthful environment is hereby declared to be of fundamental importance to the public interest, health, safety, and the general welfare. The legislature shall provide for control of pollution and control of despoilment of the air, water, and other natural resources of the state." Also, a twenty-twenty-four Senate Joint Resolution Eight states that "The state, counties, and municipalities shall serve as trustees of the natural resources of New Mexico and shall conserve, protect, and maintain these resources for the benefit of all people, including present and future generations. The state, counties, and municipalities shall not allow through government action or inaction the degradation, diminution, or depletion of natural environment that is avail, avoidable, contributes to significant environmental harm, or results in unhealthy or unsustainable environment." Taos is known for its enchanting blend of art, outdoor activities, and world-class skiing. Like it or not, it has been a haven for tourists seeking a unique blend of culture and natural beauty, and a large portion of the economy is dependent upon tourism-based revenue. However, the recent introduction of a new slaughterhouse to this vibrant community raises concerns about potential negative impacts on the town's tourism-driven, driven economy, its cherished identity, and not to mention the brutal treatment of innocent sentient beings and the environmental, financial, health, and social impacts. Since it would take three hours to discuss all the negative impacts of a slaughterhouse, and I only have three minutes, just briefly, want to touch on a couple of the environmental impacts. So, the New Mexico Environmental Department previously allowed T C E D C to let the wastewater used during carcass cleaning and preparation run off onto the bare soil at ranch sites when the mobile unit was operating. Is that what's planned here? Probably not. But they also planned to build a wastewater treatment facility at the food center where the treated water would then be used to water trees on the property. The N M A D rejected this plan and required the food center to be hooked up to the town sewer. Slaughterhouses typically dispose of wastewater containing feces, blood, cleaning chemicals, et cetera, in three ways: piping it directly into waterways, spraying it on the land, or sending it to a nearby sewage treatment plant. Um, what, where is the wastewater going for this place? A recent EPA study found that slaughterhouse industry discharges the highest phosphorus levels and second highest nitrogen levels of all industrial categories. One recent study examined EPA enforcement and compliance data from twenty sixteen to twenty eighteen for ninety-eight meat processing facilities and found that most release large amounts of pollution, three-quarters of them violated one or more pollution limits, and penalties and enforcement are rare. Who will enforce these laws for Taos?
Thank you for your comments. Uh, you completed the three minutes. Thank you for your comments, and we move on. Anyone else online? Would like to speak?
Yes, uh, my name is Shari Kestenbaum, and I'm referring to the, um, the slaughterhouse. And I am wondering, has there been an environmental impact review and statement? And how many cows will be in the corral for how long, how often? Uh, we need these numbers so we can determine if there are any detrimental effects such as stench or infectious airborne pathogens emitted from the large concentration of cows. The new manager of the facility is quoted in the Taos News as saying, um, "In the future, the facility will be able to kill one hundred and fifty cows at a time." Um, we need to know exactly what this means. A shift a day all at once? Is this in a week? Um, and more pigs and lambs? Were there any special use permits or variances needed to approve a permit for this facility? And if so, um, when and where were the public forums notified? Also, um, was there a legal ad notifying the community of this facility? Um, so, yes, we're concerned as a community, um, because we're, we're about a mile from this facility. And if there's going to be, you know, a hundred and fifty cows, uh, slaughtered a day, this could have a real impact on, on the businesses such as, uh, Taos Mesa Brewery, where they have outdoor concerts and a large patio for dining. Um, it would harm the business, because, um, people would not be able to eat. Um, and it would be, you know, quite uncomfortable for, for the other neighbors. Um, it could be a detriment to the economic community if we lose our businesses and the banks lose their return on their loans. Uh, families of this, business owners, um, could fall into poverty, and the tourists could stop coming to our town, too. And slaughterhouses are known for spreading diseases. Are there possible pathogens that cause disease that can blow from the facility to nearby neighbors and businesses? Is this something that you can approve via permit? Can, this structure could be a health danger to our community. The facility will need an advanced wastewater system. How will the disposal of the liquids from the dead animals be contained and managed within the system? So, you know, we were wondering, is there a possible, um, like, amount, um, limiting the amount of animals, um, to be slaughtered in a day? And also, is it possible to move this facility? If it has to go through, is it possible, um, you know, to put it somewhere that it's not affecting so many other businesses and homes? That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else online to speak?
Hi, my name is Sandra Romero. Thank you for your time. I am here to s-
I think we lost Sandra, at least temporarily. And anyone else online? Maybe we'll come back. Make connection. Go ahead.
It sounds like your phone lines are jammed up. We have people trying, and it's good to believe.
Right, we're not ready for the phone, uh, folks calling, and we're doing, anybody online first? Anybody that's on YouTube, and then?
Hi.
Chair?
Hi, good morning. I'm back. Can everybody hear me?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much for your time. Uh, my name is Sandra Romero, and I'm here to speak as a Taos County citizen, homeowner, and sanctuary founder who opposes the construction of the planned stationary slaughterhouse. Along more than seven hundred and fifty people that have come together to the Taos Action Group petition have created the, we create that, it was created only ten days ago to unify their voices in opposition of this facility. An industrializes ladder houses structure with a high-speed stationary kill floor that, according to the Taos News, will have the capacity to kill fifty cows at a time, and a lot more pigs, and a whole lot more lambs, baby sheep. And eventually, the Matanza will kill a hundred and fifty cows at a time. A project that, according to Marilyn Upchurch from K R Q E, will be completed at a cost of more than three million dollars. Three million of our hard-earned taxpayer dollars. At only half a mile away from the location of this ladderhouse site, we have Tune Drive, home of the highly populated residential stagecoach hills community. There are multiple concerns there. The high traffic of trucks transporting traumatized animals drowning in their own feces. We have seen those trucks before. The air pollution, the unbearable stench, we have lived by slaughterhouses before. Terrifying sounds of cows in distress will be totally detrimental, just to mention a few. The mobile unit going to local rancher properties seems to be a more reasonable, least invasive solution. Our people in Taos want peace. We don't want more killing. There is enough violence in this world already. The people of Taos is asking for peace. Our beloved town of Taos is recognized for its sacredness, for its strong art community, unique blend of cultures, ancient history, creativity, power, powerful healers, and rich spiritual tradition, a true place of love and peace for all. In this world, when things are balanced, there is harmony. Every decision, decision that we take as humans has an impact on our only planet. Every decision that we take as humans has an impact on our only planet. There is no planet B. Either positive or negative, it will have an impact. The planet where we live, the planet that we are borrowing from our kids, our grandkids, and future generations, and as the stewardships of these sacred lands, we must hold the mutual responsibility to protect and safeguard. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We'll move on to the next speaker. Go ahead.
Oops. Hello.
Hello, I'm Dave Donaldson, resident and here to speak about the slaughterhouse. I know everyone will never be in agreement on a project like this. I think most people have all the facts, but they need them, and then we need to have a conversation and get feedback from everybody. They need to know the limitations on the, you know, the emissions and the pollution and everything. My family's from a rural farming area in the Midwest. My grandparents, great-grandparents all grew up on farms, so I'm sympathetic to family ranchers and farms. When I was young, most of the farms were still owned by families, like the ranchers are here. Now, agribusiness owns most of them. Chickens and hogs are all raised in warehouses and processed by large companies. Through my career in commercial construction management, I have been in many large meat processing plants for cattle, hogs, poultry, from Virginia to Washington State. A few things all the large ones have in common is you can smell them before you can see them, the inhumane treatment of the animals, large truck traffic, and different types of pollution. For this, the reasons the facilities are all located far away from residential and as a business, I think this one should be, too. I'm not against ranching and not naive enough to think the cattle I see driving into town are pets. They will be butchered somewhere, and if I were a local rancher, I'd rather have the mobile Matanza come to me or take them to a small, local place. My concern is the size of the proposed slaughterhouse will grow. It doesn't have to get very large before it creates negative consequences that will affect the quality of life for local residences and businesses. So, I just ask you to put strict limitations on the size. Don't let it get out of control. I've heard there won't be corrals on site. It'll be kept small so there'll be minimal impacts to the community. My fear is the years go in, it's not profitable, hard to staff and manage. In order to make it profitable, you allow corrals, increase the size, bring in out-of-state management, and next thing you know, there's trucks parked on the highway waiting to offload overnight, and you can, you'll be able to smell it from the old blinking light to the gorg- So, please, just put strict limitations and enforcements on the size and management of the facility so you don't make the same mistakes my old community made.
Thank you.
I have Virgil Martinez in my office. If he's able to speak at this time. Can you hear me?
Is the vice chair available?
Mr. Chair, you're muted.
Shannon, you might want to mute until you're allowed to talk.
Please state your name first.
My name is Chris Bieber, and 20 years ago, I had been opposed to the slaughterhouse facility, the Matanza, but since raising animals on our farm and understanding how important it is for local food security, for the health of the land, the soil, I absolutely support the construction of this facility, and I think it'll be a great resource for the county, and it's moving us in the right direction. And so, I'm just calling in to give my total support, and I've worked with Lucas Salazar, who's involved, and I can tell people that his facility is clean, the animals are well taken care of in a compassionate way. And again, you know, 20 years ago, I would have been on the opposition, but my perspective has totally changed.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you so much for taking my call.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else would like to comment? Anyone else online?
Hello?
Yeah, can I go and start?
Go ahead, Will.
Okay. Hello, everybody. This is Will Drumcomb, the Taos County Agricultural Extension Agent. I'm actually in the middle of produce food safety training class. I want to point out that, you know, the people that are involved in the local food systems here in Taos County are really overwhelmingly in support of this facility. This really does free up producers to keep food local. This is so in support of the circular economy. And like John Adams mentioned earlier, I think there's a lot of misinformation out there about the size of this facility. I think what people in their minds have, you know, something like Dodge City, Kansas, or Liberal, Kansas, or Dumas, Texas. This is not this kind of facility. I've delivered animals to processors in places like Moriarty, Raton, Romeo, Manassas, where else? A lot of these kind of small facilities that are throughout the Rocky Mountain region, they are usually embedded into communities. This is not the major 18-wheeler kind of facility where you do get a lot of truck traffic and smells. These are small facilities. The 150 animal number that keeps getting bandied around has to do with the hanging area. You have to hang carcasses for at least, well, ideally, two weeks to 18 days to let natural enzymatic action happen. Those numbers are referring to that. It's not killing 150 animals at a single time. To put it in perspective of what this kind of facility does for local food economies, for local ranchers, instead of selling into an open worldwide market where you might get $900 for that weaned steer, you can keep back some animals, you can finish them on the property, and you can sell those to other people in the local community for something like $2,400. Okay? Those monies stay within the community. Okay? You cannot think of a more local economy-supporting enterprise than something like this, where you're harvesting sunlight and water into the form of grass, putting that into livestock, putting livestock into the freezer. Really, this is a local economy-supporting venture. And again, I know TCDC is going to be putting out a fact sheet pretty soon. We're going to be presenting to the Taos Roundtable on February 7th, that's myself, Mercedes, and Jillian, to kind of dispel some of this misinformation about this facility. But again, this is not a major agribusiness-type-of-facility. This is the kind of processing facility that's throughout the region. People are used to having these facilities around them. Go talk to people in Manassas or Raton about the ones in their backyard, and you're not going to hear a whole lot about those facilities. From the aspect of carbon sequestration, from the aspect of regenerative agriculture, this allows people that extra price point to keep animals on the landscape, to engage in things like rotational grazing, to get carbon back in the soil. So, again, I know people are concerned about this. This is an emotional kind of topic, but what you're, what a lot of these negative comments are about seem to be not, there was, there's a lot of information out there from TCDC about the facility. There was monthly listening sessions about the Matanza. I guess a lot of these folks didn't make it to those meetings once a month for the past year. So, I don't know what to say more than that, but again, everybody in the local food industry is excited about this. Our local producers are excited about this. I think this adds a lot to Taos County. Thanks.
Thank you, Will. Anyone else would like to speak?
This is Shannon. Go ahead, Maria.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name's Marie. I'm a resident of El Prado, and I'd like to voice my strong opposition for the construction of the proposed slaughterhouse. Taos, to me, has always symbolized a place that is deeply connected to the natural world, having a time-honored respect for the earth, its natural resources, and all its beings. I believe that people are drawn to our community to tap into this interconnection with nature, even if just briefly. A high-kill slaughterhouse in no way reflects this ethos. So, this is just one of the reasons why I strongly oppose the building of a slaughterhouse in our town, in our community. Creating slaughterhouses in towns is known to have real detrimental consequences on the community and residents. Just to mention a few, I know some of these have been brought up, but they're real. First, violent crimes always have been shown to go up whenever, you know, slaughterhouses get built in communities. Secondly, the workers suffer high rates of PTSD and substance abuse, domestic violence, and they suffer pretty serious injuries at jobs like these. Thirdly, slaughterhouses create large volumes of hazardous waste that must be released somewhere. This runs the risk of contaminating our waterways as well as releasing other large amounts of pollution into our community. And then, fourth, and lastly, public nuisances are commonly reported in neighborhoods where these slaughterhouses get built. So, that relates to the noise around them, late-night deliveries, foul odor, excrement on roadways, among others. And, you know, I just want to say that I do support bringing in new businesses to our community. I just believe that Taos would benefit from bringing more sustainable, climate-friendly businesses that will sustain the test of time. Bringing in a high-kill slaughterhouse to our community is a step backwards that will not pay dividends in the future as consumers are increasingly moving away from animal agriculture, from that industry. Sorry, a little nervous. And then, one of the gentlemen earlier had mentioned that there used to be something around, like, I believe he said, correct me if I'm wrong, 10,000 of these kinds of facilities in the country, I think he said, and now there's only 2,700. There are reasons for this. There are many, many reasons for this, you know, around money, around where consumers, around demand. And I'll just close with that Taos is an incredibly special and sacred place. It's not like anywhere else. I know we all feel that, and anyone who comes here really feels that, too. I really hope, so I really hope that the decision-makers in this room can find it in their hearts to keep it this way. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Anyone else?
Can you hear me? This is Shannon.
Go ahead.
Okay, I have Virgil Martinez in my office. He would like to address the commission.
Okay, go ahead.
Just go ahead and talk.
Yeah, my name is Virgil, for you guys that know me. You know, this is a thing that we have been working on the past for quite a few years, and it's one of our oldest traditions here in Taos County about having our own slaughter for our own food and having good food on our tables. And now, we have done a great study on it already. It's not anything that people think that we're going to do anything the wrong way. We're going to try to do everything the right way, and it's been going under those rules, and that's why we need to have a lot of people involved, as many as we can, to be able to work together in this community because it's important that we provide our good food to our kids at school and our local restaurants, our local stores, you know, food that's raised and grown here in Taos County, and that's the only way that we're going to be able to move forward. But we want to do things as clean as we can, and I know we're working on those issues because we have a way of disposing of all stuff that's not going to be used for selling things for food or anything like that, but we're going to dispose of it the right way and now, and do things exactly what it takes upon to do it because we want to be able to stay on this business forever. And if you guys have any questions, I'm more than open for any questions.
Shannon, do you have anyone else there with you to speak?
Not at this time. I don't have anybody else up here in my office.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else on the phone? Is there anybody else online? We do have a caller, Chair Romero, on the phone. Okay.
I would like to give a quick comment, if I may.
Hold on, ma'am.
Sure.
Let's go with the caller on the phone, and then you could go after ma'am. Caller, can you please state your name? Hold on, hold on, caller. Okay, caller, go ahead.
Yes, I'm a local rancher. My name is Robert Martinez, and I'd like to bring out a couple of some of the misconceptions I'm hearing, you know, on this call. The slaughter plant question is a relatively small slaughter plant, and really, they're looking at probably no more than a maximum of about 25 animals per week. And it's a, it's a mobile unit that is made up of like-
We can hear you, Mr. Martinez. There's some background noise on your side.
Yeah, no, it's a YouTube feed. It's trailing the call, so I apologize for that, and I will, I will give that right now. What I'd like to say is that the, you know, this plant is not a large plant. The plant I currently take my cattle to in Colorado is basically in a residential area. There's people that live right across the road from it. So, you're talking about 25 animals per week. The units that were purchased to support this will not support more than that.
I can't hear anything. I don't know if anyone else can.
People will rethink some of their thoughts about this. It's not a huge stench, and it is far enough away from home that it is not going to be an issue. So, again, the plant I go to in Colorado is right across from home, so I think a lot of this is very much out of proportion. So, thank you for allowing me to make these comments.
Thank you, Robert. I think we caught most of that. Anyone else online?
Yes, I'd love to make a comment, if I may.
Go ahead.
My name's Emmy Wall. I'm a local landowner and business owner. I just wanted to thank everybody for the respectful and productive conversation today, and I just wanted to bring up one point that I haven't heard mentioned. In the Taos News article, Mayor Maestas mentioned a quote from a rancher that this facility would enable them to expand their head of cattle, and I just, I'm just wondering what the effect that, you know, not immediate effect of this law- And I'm just wondering what the effect that, you know, not immediate effect of the slaughterhouse, but how that will affect our environment as livestock are a top emitter of greenhouse gases. Grazing cattle contributes to desertification and effects on our wildlife and predators, et cetera. So I wanted to bring that up. And I wanted to emphasize also that I think we need to emphasize transparency and accountability on all angles of this project. And, you know, documentation of the commitment to climate-smart pledges and humane practices are essential here. So thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else online would like to speak? Anyone else on the phone?
No, nobody else on the phone right now, Chair. We did have a caller that was trying to call. The lady was speaking. And 7793369, if you want to call back, if you still would like to make a public comment, here is that number. Okay, you're online. If you could please state your name, sir or ma'am.
Yes, my name is Mark Woodis, and I'm a local Taos rancher. And I wanted to speak on behalf of the mobile matanza and the proposed slaughter facility. I'm a third-generation local cattle rancher. And I just wanted to speak regarding the historic black pick of Taos County. My grandfather used to, when he was alive, he raised cattle. And as a family, we would get together and we would slaughter animals to be able to provide food for our family. He would slaughter animals for each individual, daughter or son. One would take half, the other would take half. The reason why things like this were done is because of the entrance to supermarkets or grocery stores, the price of food, and also the grow-your-own concept. You know, the food is out here. You know what you're growing. You know how you're treating the animals. And I myself, as a rancher, I have to take my animals to another facility, either out of state or down south, to have this process. I drop off my animal, and they process the animal there. I believe that by being able to have this type of facility here locally, the greatest benefit to the community by being able to provide homegrown, fresh, organic, high-quality beef to our residents and to our restaurants and to those individuals that would like to purchase the product. A lot of these people, with all due respect, that are in opposition of this slaughterhouse, currently purchase their food, I'm sure at a lot of local supermarkets. So they're in opposition of the sustainability of our community. Taos has historically been an agricultural community. Historically, before everybody started moving here from California, New York, and Texas, wherever they came from, we have always grown our own food. If it's in our garden or if it's on the ranch, we raise our alfalfa. It is organic. And we feed our animals organically. I feel that this is, those that are in opposition of this are continuing. The voices that I'm hearing is against sustainability. Taos needs to be sustainable, food security. You know, this should be very important for the local residents, those of us that continue to participate in animal culture, those of us that continue to work, you know, 12, 15-hour days, preserving our herds and irrigating our fields, to have an avenue so that we can be able to reliably sell our products locally to those individuals that want to purchase it.
Thank you.
I myself, we humanely slaughter animals and to be able to do it in a USDA-inspected facility is what I believe is only an aspect to our community.
Thank you, Mark.
Maintain food security.
Okay. Thank you for your comment, Mark. And did we get another caller on the telephone? I think another one came in, so.
You're on for public comments. Please state your name.
Hello, my name is Juan. I'm a resident of El Prado. And thank you for having me this morning. And I want to say that I strongly oppose the plan to build a slaughterhouse here in our community. We, the community, must consider the consequences. And it's something that is so important in this decision. What will this plan bring to us, to the community? And it's something that all of us must think of, consider. And I hope that the right decision will be made. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have anyone else?
Chair, can we please repeat that number again? Because I think it's changed. And I did get some message from someone, and I gave them the wrong number. So I want to make sure they get the right number. Okay, I did give them that number. Okay.
It's, everybody's calling the number, and it's forwarded to my phone because there's not a phone line in here. So everybody just has to be patient with one another. We can only take one call at a time.
Okay. Again, the number 5757376310. Going once, going twice. Okay, I think we have completed our public comment section. And again, it is an opportunity that we give to the public to speak to the commission and to speak to the public. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. And we, I think, are now at the point of adjournment for the meeting. And so with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner. Taken by Commissioner Miguel Romero. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, commissioners. We'll see you next week. We have an in-person meeting on February 6th, the week from now. But we also maybe will see you tomorrow at the state legislature for Taos County. Thank you, and we'll see you soon.